All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:14 PM. It is Tuesday, May the 5th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Turn the floor to Mayor Protem for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Here.
Allison?
Present.
Shields?
Here.
Rizzo?
Who?
Vialobos?
Present.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to approve the City Council's special meeting minutes from January 7th, the council meeting minutes from January 7th, the special meeting minutes from January 21st, the meeting minutes from January 21st, special meeting minutes from February 4th, meeting minutes from February 4th, workshop meeting minutes from February 8th, workshop meeting minutes afternoon from February 8th, workshop meeting minutes February 9th, special meeting minutes from February 18th, and meeting minutes from February 18th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Shields, seconded by its member Vialobos since 31st of the discussion. But we had a lot of meetings in February. All his affairs say aye, aye? All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Seven to zero. All right, next up, citizen comments period with the city council. At this time, we ask anyone who is registered and on the phone line designated to speak on any item on the, in the agenda. We ask that you limit those comments to three minutes and that you direct the mayor and council. We do also ask that you state your name prior to speaking. Samantha, do we have anyone set up?
We have one caller. Bring them in now.
This is Lila Knight. I hate the sound redundant, but I'll try to change it up a little bit. Now, more than ever, it is incumbent upon our government at all levels to be as transparent as possible. It is my hope that this city council will work much harder to provide transparency to your citizens, the taxpayers. There are several recent examples of this. First, the consideration of the inner street reconstruction project tonight, a public street that was discussed behind closed doors. Also, the minute of the workshop from February 8th tonight in Fredericksburg gives us no idea what was discussed, although the purpose of the meeting was for strategic visioning encompassing 16 different topics. It sounds very important and costs the taxpayers over $18,000. The city secretary failed to release your financial disclosure statement filed in January and required to be filed by law. She told me, not the city attorney, that I could only examine them at City Hall, and City Hall is closed. Although I informed her I received copies in the past from both the city of Kyle and Hays County, she fails to respond to my email. Frankly, this makes it look like you have something to hide. I don't think you do. And you have appointed so many council committees, I have lost track of them. Public transportation, police headquarters, Hero's Monument, to name but a few. Yet none of these meetings have been posted or open to the public, even though all meetings, including committee meetings, are required to be held in compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act and shall provide time for public comment. This charter amendment was approved by a vote of the citizens in 2016. Also, our own ordinance, number 855, requires public meetings to be open. The Texas Attorney General has decided that a committee of a council whose recommendations are regularly rubber stamped must comply with the Open Meeting Act, even though it is not made up of a quorum. I wrote all of you an email about this, which brings me to my last point. Each of you receives $12,000 a year from the taxpayers. Please, please, bother to respond to us in some small way. Thank you. I look forward to greater transparency from you in the very near future. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do we have any other comments?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close. Citizen comments period is now closed. Next up, Agenda Item Number 13, Presentation of Carla Sheridan, Assistant City Secretary. Mr. Toronto?
Hi, I would like to introduce our new employee, Carla Sheridan. Hopefully she'll be joining us on video shortly. She comes to us with city secretary experience, and I'm very glad that we're on. We've been diligently training daily remotely as we've been on this COVID-19 stay-at-home order. And appropriately, it is also municipal clerk May 3rd through the 9th. So it's a great time to be introducing our new Assistant City Secretary.
Thank you, Jennifer. Carla, are you there?
I saw she was logged in. There she is. Hi, Carla.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. How has it been being the Assistant City Secretary coming in right at the same time as the City Hall goes into a drastically changed form of administration?
It's definitely been interesting and very informative. It's been interesting, to say the least. I've learned a lot from Jennifer. She's been a very good leader, a good example for the city of Kyle. I'm really excited about joining the team, and everyone has been completely professional, very helpful, welcoming from the citizens to the employees, to the council. I'm enjoying it.
Thank you, Carla. Anybody have any feedback for Carla?
Not at all. Thank you for being here and much, much needed assistance to Jennifer. And we are very happy to have this help coming into the office and part of the team, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Because we also.
Say that Jennifer really, she continues to amaze me every day. I've been in the position of as a city secretary, and I'm completely amazed at Jennifer and what her capabilities and what she's managed to juggle with such a heavy load that she has. And to stay afloat like she has is really impressive. A lot of those minutes Jennifer had already completed. They just needed some final touches to them, and she's using that to help train. So I wanted to add that, that I'm really impressed with Jennifer as a city secretary and the ability that, what she's brought to the table for the city of Kyle.
Thank you, Carla.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thanks for, thanks for joining us. We look forward to getting back to a more normal routine here pretty soon.
Yes.
Welcome to the team, Carla.
I'm going to go ahead and move on. Task Force, Agenda Item Number 14, Presentation. Task Force Update on Police Headquarters Construction. Chief Barnett.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two items to give you an update on. First, the company that we are seeking to do for Public Education Campaign. That is, Mayor Protem, I like your hat, by the way. I'm sorry, very official. Thanks.
Thank you. I wanted to wear this hat when you gave the update on that, so.
That's awesome. So the firm that we are seeking for Public Education Campaign and outreach, we have narrowed that search down to two finalists. We anticipate interviewing one of those finalists on Wednesday night of this week, and then we will interview the second remaining finalist on Thursday night. And then I suspect that the committee will reconvene within a day or so after that and make their selection, if not, and we'll bring that back before the city council at the next council meeting. In regards to the construction manager at risk, I'm happy to report that we received the 15 interested parties, and we had some very good candidates. The committee, the task force that the council assigned has spent the last 10 or 12 days going through those 15 applications and utilizing a score sheet by PGAL as guidance, and votes have now been turned in to PGAL to combine and get us a final score. Once we get that, I anticipate that they will be ranked, and we will bring that as well for the council at the next council meeting for review and possible recommendation. So the next council meeting, we might, if all goes well, come back to you with two recommended companies, one for each of our programs.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chief. Any, any further comments or?
Chief, on the evaluation cards for the 15 candidates, did we get all those cards turned in yet?
I believe that each of the committee members that are responding to that or have submitted them or will submit them by tonight. Just in the last hour, I spoke to PGAL representative, and I believe he intends to tabulate all of them probably by tomorrow morning and give us some position as to where we're at. Just as a notice, the committee each evaluated the companies on their own. So what was not done during a meeting, those were done individually on our own.
And I know PGAL also gave a couple of committee members some training videos just on, on how to answer some of those questions, well, not how to answer questions, but how, what process to use to go about, you know, determining what is a suitable company to build our new police department.
Yes, sir. They assisted us, you're right, with a scoring technique and something that we could use for consistency across the task force members to make sure that we were all using the same criteria.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 15, City Managers' Report. Kyle Community Survey 2020 Budget Workshop, June 13th. Mr. Sellers?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor Protem, Coach, isn't the only one with a fun hat tonight. This is my closest approximation to Cinco de Mayo, so I could come up with. I wanted to just briefly talk about our household survey. As the council knows, each year we have a survey in advance of the budget to help shape the budget and council priorities. This year, we opened that survey April 17th. That was open until 5:00 PM this afternoon, and we had a total of 543 respondents, which is roughly around four, a little over 4% response rate, pretty much in line with prior surveys. We were a little limited in the response due to COVID-19 this year, but we actually are pretty pleased with the number of respondents. And actually, I am wearing this hat for a reason as well. We enticed our residents to fill out the survey by being entered into a drawing. So I'm going to take this hat, and I'm going to add a bunch of names. Over 80 different survey respondents have filled out for a free pie. And so with that, I'm going to draw our lucky winner right here in the council meeting. Straight from the hat, and that.
Drumroll.
Drumroll. Judy Gardner.
Nice.
Judy Gardner, you have just earned yourself a free pie. So congratulations. We'll make sure we get in touch with you. The other item on the manager's report is the budget retreat date change. If the council recalls, we had originally set a budget retreat for just a week and a half from now. You go over our preliminary numbers and the materials, have the department heads start to justify those to council. Because of COVID-19, we feel like that is a little premature. We'll know a little bit more coming out of the April-May timeframe, which means, you know, as sales tax are collected in arrears or reported in arrears, we feel like we won't have the best grasp of those revenue numbers until about, you know, June timeframe. So we've alerted the department heads that the budget for this next year really should be a continuation of this year's budget. We're going to try to keep service delivery the same, but yet without expanding the services until we have a really strong financial picture of our revenues. So with that said, we are proposing that we move the date to June 13th. We will start at 8:30 in the morning. We are still looking for a venue for that retreat, and so that will be forthcoming. But for the public, council and staff, that retreat date will change now to June 13th at 8:30 AM. No, I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Sellers? All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number 16, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Garba, City Engineer. Before I get into the presentation, I did want to ask the council, post on item number 17. That's the only item we have on the consent agenda. It's for the acceptance of the Space 2 project. Contractor was supposed to wrap up the improvements of the punch list last week and didn't quite make it. So we're asking that we post on to our next council meeting, which will be the 29th, I believe. Let me start with the CIP Road Project Update. Lehman Road, we're up to 66%. The bridge is about 95% complete. We do seem to have a bridge railing installed, but what you're looking at in the picture is actually the culvert that's north of the bridge that we're building. This structure is pretty well completed also. Lehman is close from Hyatt to Bud Creek Road, and we're expecting to try to complete this project by August this year and hopefully sooner than that, because we know we have schools starting this year in that area. So we want to get this road finished as quickly as we can. Burleson Street, again, we increased the completion on this, and we're at 77% complete. We still have Senator Rodriguez open to local traffic only. And as you've noticed, we do have some pavement distresses on the sections of the road between Lockhart and Live Oak. We have encircled the groundwalk. Of course, north of Rodriguez, to the south of the roundabout, is closed. Burleson, north of the roundabout, is open to local traffic only, and we're about 95% complete on the utility side of the question. I did need to counsel that last session that we were probably going to slip on our date for the completion of the project. It wasn't June, and I wanted to kind of explain what's happening on the project. We are right now waiting. We finally got approvals from Unit Pacific for the bore that we need to do under the railroad tracks. It took us a while to get that approved by then. We already had gotten it at one time, but expired, and we had to go back and reapply for that permit. We did get the permit. It's done now. So we've gotten through that gauntlet with Unit Pacific. The contractor sub is hoping to be there in about three weeks to start the bore and wrap that up, and hopefully about, takes about two to four weeks to do that. That way, we can wrap up that last section that's right there by James Atkins and get that covered up. The other thing that we're going to have to do also as quickly as we can is to put a French drain on the west side of the Burleson there around Lockhart and Live Oak. We need to intercept that water that's getting underneath the road. So once we get that done, then we'll make the repairs to the road, and hopefully that'll keep that situation from recurring. So that's the reason that we slipped on our date for that particular project. Southside wastewater improvements, we're up to 52% complete, and we do have two crews working on post road at the little station, and we have a second crew working on the gravel line near public course. On the wastewater treatment plant expansion, again, the notion received is going to be issued from May 25th. The contractor has been working out there building the access road, and we have also been in contact with the Bubley Falls HOA and been providing updates to them as the project moves along. And that wraps up my presentation. Unless there's more questions.
Leon, this is Councilman Vialobos. Just wanted a real quick question with regards to Western. I know that we still have some of the rock down there and leading up into that cul-de-sac. Is that, is that, is that project finished down there? Are we still got some things going on?
We actually have a section, a couple of sections of line that we've all had to look into. We've got to sag in those lines, so we're working with the contractor to get those resolved. So we have not made contact with that contractor yet. So I will follow up on that section over there where the rock is.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Leon, you said we probably were going to have a different final date on Burleson. What does that date look like now? I know originally it was June 20th.
We're looking at August 20, August 2020, but we're again trying to push the contractor to get the work completed sooner than later. If the weather holds up, we have a good shot of getting it done soon. We're going to keep working with the contractor, encouraging him to get the work done. If you'll go by also, just I know that council member Dex, you'd been interested in the water quality. It looks that we had over there on Burleson, we had a company that volunteered their labor to do some work on there. So very interesting what they've done in there. So that's a kind of a neat thing that they've been working on. So I think you'll check those out right there by the Chinese restaurants.
Thank you, Leon.
Thank you, Leon.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Leon?
Yes, I have one. This is Councilman Tobias. Hey, Leon, good evening. Reference in Lehman Road, you said 66 complete, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the sidewalks, how are they coming along? Are they coming along both sides, or is it just one side, like on the north side?
It's just on the inside.
Okay, will there be street lights added to that as well, all the way up to Isol?
It's safety lighting. I think we installed something there at the intersection.
Okay, great. Okay, and we're still looking at completion by August?
I would like to tell you that it could be done soon. That's our plan, but we will consider it in saying August. We definitely have to get out of August. There's no other choice.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we're going to skip Agenda Item Number 17. You don't need to date certain. You can just bring it back right, Leon.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Next up, Agenda Item Number 18, Consider Approval of Kyle Citizens on Patrol Designs. Chief Barnett, our Citizens on Patrol have been pretty active lately as well, so go ahead.
They sure have. Thank you. Yes, our Citizens on Patrol got their start a few weeks ago with our program for the community at the golf course, and they've done a great job. They've enjoyed their time out there with the citizens, and they're also putting some of their training to work. They still have a few more weeks of training once we recover from all of the shift in procedures with COVID, but they're doing a really good job. We're very proud of them. You may recall that when our program was going through the approval process, you and the council asked that we bring back any anticipated designs for our future vehicle for them to use, as well as their uniforms, and we have that for your review tonight. And I'm going to try to share my screen and see if I can bring these up and show them. See if I can do this. Well, I may not be able to do it. I know that they're attached to the agenda. I'm going to see. Okay, I think I got it here. No, I apologize. I may not be able to. I thought I could hit this share button and get those sent to you, and maybe Matt might be able to help me. I've been talking to Matt, and he was going to try to share the items on the agenda. One will be a, Jennifer's going to help me out. Thank you, Jennifer. The first item that you see here, can everybody see it before I start?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. So the first item you see is the emblem that is on the front chest of the uniforms that the Citizens on Patrol are wearing. That patch you've actually already approved prior to us starting the patrol with the golf course. They have that. That was designed by one of our members, one of our Citizens on Patrol members, Mike Ubsom, as well as our Citizens on Patrol Law Enforcement Liaison Officer, Officer James Plant. And they're actually utilizing those today on the front of their shirts. The next item that you'll see is a design for the vehicles. We were gracious enough to receive a vehicle that was no longer needed in another city department a few months ago, and this vehicle is still in good shape to be used for the purposes of Citizens on Patrol. You can see that we've chosen a very cost-efficient and simplistic design with black letters on the solid white vehicle. You see that we have the words volunteer and citizens included in that very large, so that when they're driving through the community, evident that they are citizens and that they are volunteers. The next item that you will see, I think we should be able to go through just very briefly, a standard issue raincoat from the days. They already utilized that one day out at the golf course when they had a pop-up shower. So they'll be issued a high-visibility yellow raincoat. The next item is a high-visibility safety traffic vest, so that when they assist officers maybe at an accident scene or with a broken-down vehicle on the side of the road, they'll be completely visible. And then the last item that you will see here will be their white polo shirt. This is what they're wearing now with the emblem that we shown on the front. And we anticipate putting volunteer across our rocker on the back and Citizens on Patrol as well on the back of that white shirt. They will then utilize black pants, black belt, and either black shoes or boots that will be provided by those citizen volunteers, so they can get one that meets the requirements, but that fits them well. And that's it. All of these are very cost-efficient, and the Citizens on Patrol group, as well as Officer Plant, have picked them out, what they want to go with. I would, I would just kind of give you an update. Even though that we've rolled the Citizens on Patrol program out in recent weeks, they still have several weeks of training to go. I would anticipate that it would be possibly at the end of the summer, at best, before they would be out on patrol utilizing the vehicle, because we still have some training courses to go. But we would like to go ahead and get that vehicle striped and have it ready for use, and then as well as ordering their uniforms and getting them ready to go.
Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I've heard you talk about the Citizens on Patrol program for probably what feels like about five years now. It's, it's one of the things I remember hearing a lot about when I was a very active member in the Citizens Police Academy, and I am extremely proud of where it's going and even more proud that you had it set up and ready to go in a time of emergency to help us open up some much-needed space for our citizens to take walks when everybody's been cooped up. I think that the sky's the limit. I've told you this before on this program. I'm looking forward to that vehicle getting wrapped. My question is, do you still plan on putting lights on it? Because I think a big element is it looking somewhat authoritative in nature a little bit for the Neighborhood Patrol, which is an area that we definitely need, you know, we could use their help in the patrol around our neighborhoods in Kyle.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. We do plan to add some lights right now. We're trying to see what lights we have in our inventory that have come off of older vehicles. When we've removed them from police service, we would change out the red and blue to an amber color, so it's going to look more like a construction yellow flashing light. But yes, sir, we do anticipate putting lights on the vehicle, and we're going to keep that at either no cost or very low cost, and all the lights to an amber color, so that they're high visibility for their safety as well. And we'll have that on 360 degrees around the vehicle. And we'll have that on three hundred and sixty degrees around the vehicle.
Well, those volunteers are just fantastic members of the community and we are very lucky to have them and lucky to have citizens patrol up and enrolling. So thank you very much for that, chief. And send along my thanks to the volunteers and to Officer Plant as well.
Absolutely, sir. We'll do. Well, you're right. We're very fortunate to have the caliber of citizens and the caliber of officer plant and the others that have been. I agree. Thank you.
Oh, chief, this is Councilman Tobias. I'm very excited about this program and I wanted to thank you and the volunteers and of course, James Plant. I used to work with him back in Travis County. He's a great guy. Very dedicated to the community and I know he's a, he's a very big asset to to your department. Everything looks good and I think Mayor Proten made a point on on the lights. Are they going to be, like you said, they're going to be more of an amber style lights for the vehicle? As far as the uniform itself, will they have duty belts such as requiring to have a specific radio with them? And also the pants, are they going to be more uniformed in like in the BDU five eleven style, black or blue? Something to be all in uniform and that, or they're going to be just whatever they choose as far as the black jeans go.
No, the the black pants will be something similar to the law enforcement style and even for our officers, we offer the cargo pocketed style. If they want to put things there and we offer something that looks more like a dress pant. They will not be authorized to wear denim, so no type of blue jean type of material. But they will look more like the police officer style. As far as a duty belt, since we're not going to ask them to wear any heavy load on their waist, they'll probably have a regular trouser belt. You may see them with a flashlight, you might see them with a handheld radio, something to that effect, but obviously no weapons of any kind. And I don't think that they'll wear the thicker, larger belt style. Something just for a trouser belt, trouser pants actually will be at the top of belt they're wearing. But you may see him with something on the side like a flashlight or a radio. We will provide those.
Oh, right. Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So, chief, good question. So the the lights, we're going to light them up like the police vehicles similarly, correct?
Similar in nature, yes, sir. It'll have, if, I think we'll be able to put a, what looks like a clear light bar on the top until you activate it and it will flash amber. The other thing is, is that we can add some lights around the body of the vehicle. It won't be that many, but it'll be enough to get the job done and keep them safe and not be distracting in any way, but it'll be something to keep their vehicle lit when they are on the side of the interstate and they need to keep people away.
And those lights are something, whatever cost they are, you can absorb in your budget for this program?
Yes, sir. We're, we're going to try to use some of our light bars that have been removed off of older police vehicles over the last few years. And you can see about changing the internal module that currently flashes blue or red, just convert that to an amber module. If that doesn't work, then we'll look for some other very cost efficient way to get a light bar and some additional lights on the vehicle. We'll keep the cost very, very low and we can absorb that. Something I failed to mention while, well, number of citizens on patrol that we have that we're outfitting with these uniforms is five. So five is our number.
Chief, Councilmember Rizzo, as far as the vehicle itself, are we going to be outfitting it with any kind of gear? As far as like cones, safety, what do you call it, devices, maybe even a medical kit?
We will, sir, and those are items that we already have in our stock, so we won't really buy any additional stuff, but we will have some things like cones. We'll put in some swift water gear in case extra is needed and they're bringing it to the scene. There'll be all kinds of, we we put in there for both use and for the use of officers should they come and back us up for something.
That's great. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
One last thing, Councilman Tobias here. The idea possibly a dash cam in the vehicle itself, let's say if they have to assist somebody on the side of the road. Would that be something that has been thought of as far as having a dash cam in the front or in the back of the vehicle?
I don't know that we thought. Yeah, it it's definitely something that we could do if if you wish. What we had thought we might do before we did the dash camera is give them a body camera, something they could wear on them. That way it's closer to them out in the scene. And those don't require a system particularly in the car. They can just wear that independently. More cost efficient and then no matter where they walk to, if they're on a walking trail or whatever, they can activate it anytime it's needed.
Great, great job, chief. Again, it seems like you guys have thought of everything and you you're exactly right with the the quality of citizens that we have engaged in this piece. I've got some really good people helping out. A good, good way to start this program off and and show some, show some legacy with the program with people coming in as you continue to change people out. Thank you for all your work and and again, James Plants for his work. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You bet.
Yes, sir, chief. I wanted to say thank you for the work of both the the volunteers and the citizens and of course Officer Plant. And I, the designs are great. So thank you so much. Appreciate it very much.
All right, if there's no further comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the citizens on patrol design.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven, two, zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, next up, agenda item number nineteen, first reading, approving ordinance regulating traffic, authorizing and directing the installation and erection of stop signs for traffic control at the intersection of Scott Street and West Street in the city limits of Kyle. Mr. Barbara, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor and council, typically when you get a request to install or look at a multi-way stop sign at an intersection, there's several guidelines that we look at that are in the Texas manual, uniform traffic control devices or the TMUTCD as we call it. That some of them involve a number of accidents. It depends on how many accidents you have there. You also can do traffic counts and to see how the traffic counts are affecting the intersection. And you also have a final guideline which says that, for example, if the engineer determines if there's a need, there's any issues with the intersection, for example, folks making a left turn lane in that intersection, even they're having a hard time seeing around obstacles or things like that, then that's another reason that you can install a multi-way stop sign. So that's the, when you look at these guidelines, you don't have to meet all of the guidelines. And in this case, it didn't meet the guidelines for the traffic counts obviously because we didn't take any based on the current situation we have with COVID nineteen. And also the, we didn't find a number of accidents that were the last good and implement the multi-way stop signs there. So based on the situation that we have with that corner, that blind corner there, the guideline that was met, my recommendation was to go ahead and install the multi-stop signs at that intersection. And again, Mayor Proten, Coach had asked us also to look at the possibility of a roundabout there, small roundabout. So Mr. Shels, if you can help me with that, we came up with a design.
One sec, I'll pull that right up.
Our in-house designer is Gushad Nawali and this is what he came up with. We tried to reduce any taking of any property in the area, running adjacent right of way. So we, the only place that we're approaching is on our city property a little bit, there on the east side of that intersection. But this is what we came up with as far as the design for this particular intersection is for the roundabout to be built here. We didn't have a lot of time to put together an estimate, but I think if we went out for contract, this probably would be in the range of between two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. That's just a rough estimate that I can come up with. Again, if we want to do this in-house, I'm sure Mr. Waller needs another project, maybe. This this could be done in-house for a much better cost, obviously.
And so I'll, I'll chime in on this design, you know, as we looked at it, the the mini roundabout idea is definitely something that's, that's intriguing. This is a forty-foot diameter roundabout, so it's still decent. This would be basically a a dome in the middle of the road, which is mountable for larger vehicles. But the approach, as you can see, or the exit does come into the library property somewhat significantly. So there's several parking stalls in front of the library that would be eliminated through this design. As well as obviously there'd be quite a bit of pushing back, some, some fence being relocated for this. And then just some, some median improvements. As we looked at this in-house, it 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 looks like a good design, a novel. As the traffic counts may improve or or, you know, augment through that area. You know, could be more necessary, but because of the low ADT today or average daily traffic on Scott Street today, as well as the limited ability for us to do this in-house, we thought that we would begin initially with just a, a stop sign intersection there. And our public works crew would go out there as well and build the ADA ramps. That would be necessary as far as that construction. So that would be kind of a phase one. And then as we moved in, as we looked at those traffic volumes and saw how the, the traffic was responding to those, those signs, we could come in in a future phase and look at the mini roundabout.
Leon, did I hear that correctly, that we're not going to encroach on any other land but our own?
That is correct.
And Scott, the majority of the parking spots for the library are in the rear section of the library, correct?
Yes, yeah, the the majority are. Just keep it, keep in mind that, I don't have it here, but the transportation master plan shows the extension of Rebel Drive south. I can probably pull that up really quick. As, as Rebel Drive proceeds south, it will come through this library property. And tie in somewhere in here, which will also reduce those parking spaces and then West First Street becomes the arterial that takes that traffic and routes it from downtown. So in the future, there will be a traffic pattern shift that we'll need to look at how that impacts Scott Street, Moore Street, West First and the parking at the library.
So my question is, who owns that lot to the right of the library? The, they're on the corner of Meyer and keep moving around, sorry. Yeah, that area right there. Who owns that right there?
You're going to tax me here. I believe it's the same owners as, as this parcel here.
Okay, I didn't know if we owned it. One reason is we are going to be needing more library parking because right now as it is, we don't have enough parking for the library. So we'll have to start addressing that issue further down the road because right now, I mean, we're, when they have an event there, I mean, they're, they're short of parking spots.
Councilmember, one thing that we had discussed, I believe that's Miss Sledge that owns that.
It is a sledge.
Thank, thank you. One thing we had discussed was, you know, our butterfly garden i- is here on, on this parcel. As the road comes in through this direction, we would extend the parking lot up to this area as well.
Keep, keeping the butterfly garden, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I like driving up there in the evenings and sitting out there. It's pretty nice.
And the Purvis parking lot, right?
Nothing but papers.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Travis. Sorry.
I was going to ask if there's any further discussions or motions.
I'll tell you, I, I like getting the stop signs up there pretty quickly. One reason is I think that there's a, a need for them to be there sooner, but I, I'm kind of intrigued by that roundabout. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not a, a roundabout guy, but that's just a really neat design. Kind of like it, so. But I, I think that would be something that we could look at in the future. But I, I'm really in favor of going ahead and putting those stop signs in there. So I'd like to make a motion to install the stop signs and do the curb if it's acceptable with the rest of the council.
And, and just a point of clarification, we need to approve the ordinance.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
The, the action would be to approve the ordinance that's in front of council that would regulate those stop signs by law.
I'd like to approve the, so just motion to approve the ordinance as specified.
So I guess.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Villa Lobos. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yes. Leon, you did those in-house? That's beautiful work. I really love the way that that's laid out. I'm with Councilmember Rizzo where, you know, we just kind of threw it out there a few weeks ago, thinking about it at the last minute for you guys to come back with that quality of design. That would be a very beautiful streetscape and land piece that to, to add to, to the road. So I'm very impressed. I would, I would much rather have that than, than stop signs. But I do understand what, what Councilmember Rizzo is talking about right now, but I'm just, I'm just over the moon with the quality of work. I, I'm glad you guys be able to pump that out so quickly. So thank you guys very much for that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate that. I'll pass it on.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Is there any objection to this being finally passed? All right, it's finally passed. Good job, Councilmember Rizzo.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
All right, next up, agenda item number twenty, ratify mayor's order number six regarding gas stations and daycare measures, sanitation measures for retail providers, repealing minimum gathering limits in prior orders and providing for public HOA and semi-public pools and playgrounds to remain closed. Our orders expired on April thirtieth. Extended to sync up with the governor's timeline for May eighteenth, which I thought was really interesting because our eviction, the only order that we made that didn't sync up with the governor in the state was our evictions ordinance. And then the Texas Supreme Court recently synced their dates up exactly to May eighteenth as well. So it looks like all of, assuming the council approves what we've set up here. At all of our orders, the remaining orders are set to expire on May eighteenth. The primary difference here is that we repealed the state, the elements of our order that were stay-at-home based and allowed for the governor's orders to prevail. We did provide for a more strict standard on face masks. We still require face masks in our daycares. We also require face masks and face coverings at our retail establishments to be worn by those employees who are customer facing at point-of-sale counters and, and those kind of transactions. So I try to be real surgical there to still keep us safe and maybe even on the safer side compared to some of the other jurisdictions around with slightly more sanitation measures in force. But hopefully we'll get through this soon. Hopefully, hopefully. Anybody have any questions or feedback?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the move is to require at the businesses, just those that are customer-facing handling transactions, those are the only people required to wear masks in the businesses. And there's correct?
Correct. So it wouldn't be a bank teller? Correct. So it wouldn't be a bank teller, but it would be a barista or someone working a drive-through window. It'd be someone taking your payment at a gas station, or if you're at Walmart or HEB or Lowe's or Home Depot. It's much more geared towards those types of retail businesses that historically have had no restrictions placed on them or expectations placed on them. So there is a lot of consideration about some other things, but these are the only things. It's difficult trying to work within the gray area provided by the governor. With each subsequent gubernatorial order, the gray area becomes, you know, that margin becomes less. So this is about as much as I could conceive of doing within the framework of time that we were afforded, which was very limited. I'm not sure if that was by design from the governor or not, but.
So and then businesses could still choose to have their own policy to require masks of patrons in their business.
Yeah, many do, actually. Many have standards that are much more rigorous than our own. You know, we're not trying to tell every business exactly how to operate. We're just trying to establish a minimum standard that we think is necessary to ensure safety. So we focused on the masks and then we focused on, historically, as a council, we have been focused on limiting household contacts through daycares and then working with individual businesses to improve their practices. But yes, it's certainly not the only rule. A lot of businesses have more stringent rules than what we have.
Absolutely. I think that's great that they would have that flexibility. So essentially, we're putting, we're requiring masks on some employees, a small percentage of employees to protect patrons from them.
Well, everybody has their own theory about what the benefit of the mask is. I see it slightly differently, but yes, for the most part.
Well, the CDC has stated, and it's clear across, even with the World Health Organization and across other countries, that the mask is not to protect you from getting something. It's to protect others from what you might have.
Correct. So I see it as a measure to protect the customers.
From people that have been essentially going to work this entire time.
Correct.
This is Councilman Tobias. I think the bottom line is that with everything that's been going on, that we hope the business owners and their employees really take in consideration their customers and the consumers that come in. And you're right, Councilman Ellison, it has to do with in case that person has something that it's not exposing it to the consumer or the customer coming in. So it's just a matter of them getting that that sense of protection for your customer when they come into the store or wherever it's at. I think that's where we're trying to get at, is for them to really consider that and really push it on their employees to just take that extra precaution, universal precaution, and those protective measures going forward. And including upping their standards as far as cleanliness and sanitation, whether it's inside their store, where there's their bathrooms, I think we've all been exposed to. And I'm sure they have too, of what's required now. I mean, the world's changed. We've got to change our ways of looking at things. I hope the businesses here in Kyle will really take that in consideration for the safety of their customers that come in.
Yeah, and I might add that there's been some considerable amount of conversation about what rules are and are not enforceable. The mask policy is one of the topics that's been at the forefront of the discussion at the mayor level, at the county judge level, and then certainly at the governor level. And Governor Abbott and Attorney General Paxton did pretty much close the door on a city or a county's ability to require masks throughout the community while in public. In other words, the type of policy that was put in place in some of the major cities as well as a few other counties in Texas. The governor said very clearly that that law, while it can go in, it can be put in place, it cannot be enforced. So you can't issue citations or fines for that. With that said, we have been a little more surgical in trying to apply the governor's law really throughout this process so that we can go deeper into the community and have an impact on the community without contradicting what the governor says. And so just with this round of orders in the exact same way as the last time we updated our orders, we spent a lot of time engaging local business owners, stakeholders, staff, just a lot of discussion and deliberation. There are a lot of things on the table. We did speak to the Attorney General's Office, spoke with Leslie French, the same counsel that I see put our healthcare policy to test. And went through our orders and they were all affirmed to be lawful and compliant with GA eighteen and Governor Abbott. And as such, we sent out, in an effort of community, to demonstrate community support, but also to really communicate what the new policy was. We sent out our fire department, who volunteered to help, as well as officers with the police department, and went and provided updates and information to pretty much every retail business in town so that they would know what the new law was and that they would know that we were within our jurisdictional powers to enforce this law. Obviously, up until this point, we have not enforced with citations and fines any of the laws that we put into place because we've been able to get the kind of compliance that we see going anywhere near that. But it is there, and I do believe that it is enforceable, the method that we chose to take to put these laws into place.
Mayor, can you please explain the thought process for keeping the HOA and semi-public pools closed?
I can try.
Okay, please.
When the governor initially announced that he wanted to open up quite a few businesses, it was originally a thought to put the decision of the pools and the playground equipments to the owners of that infrastructure. So, you know, an apartment complex or an HOA could decide for themselves whether or not to open up those facilities. It was definitely a strong consideration, but the two arguments that kind of pushed me to the side of wanting to wait until the eighteenth were, number one, enforceability. When half the pools are closed and half the pools are open, it can create kind of a nightmare scenario when folks don't know and they're going to be calling our police department and staff to get clarity. And so we've always tried to make sure that the orders we put in place were real clear so that we didn't burden the police department or ourselves, myself, with a lot of people seeking clarification. So that was the one side of it. The other side of it is really inspiration from our initiative on the parks themselves and the opening up of park space and green space. We took a very unorthodox approach with our parks, which was proven to be, I think, a very good decision based on the results. But instead, when at the height of the shutdown, instead of closing more parks and restricting more outdoor space, we increased our outdoor space pretty dramatically. And that has worked to be, out to be a very successful initiative. So my thinking was, instead of opening up half the pools in town with a patchwork policy and keeping city pools closed and every, you know, which we, that we should open them all up at once with a new set of rules, possibly, depending on where we're at, so that all of the resources are available to absorb the demand because we're going to want to keep density down, just like with our parks. So ultimately, it was about keeping everything standard. I think that certain HOAs could probably manage opening up a pool right now. But I also feel like they can wait until May eighteenth, just like we will, before making that decision.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. It's just that some of us who, you know, some of the HOAs who feel like they probably could manage it because they would have the lifeguards, they would have the monitors to be able to keep, you know, crowd and keep social distancing. But, you know, we just need a time date to be able to get those contracts signed and everything. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's coming. It's just a matter of that equity and consistency in our messaging. It's also very helpful that this is not July and August. It's not even June. We're talking the first two weeks of May, which is really when the beginning of the the pool season really is anyway. So I think we're not doing a start-stop-start-stop, and we're also not taking away the entire summer. We're just waiting a little bit longer on that particular piece.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I was just wondering and just thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Mayor, Councilmember Rizzo, I'm glad that we're waiting. One reason why is that the past Friday was the grand opening, so to speak, of many of the businesses at twenty-five percent. And I know it's going to be a couple of weeks before we get the numbers on how that's affecting us in the area. Opening everything up together wouldn't be able to give you a clear picture of that. So I'm glad that we waited on opening the pools so that we can get some real-life numbers and see how the twenty-five percent is affecting the area. But the other thing is that we still don't know everything about this disease. I mean, once we start being more outdoors around water, you know, we start thinking about mosquitoes, everything else. I might be overthinking this, but, you know, I'm still worried about, you know, what COVID- nineteen, but we don't know about it, the uncertainties. And, you know, I think if we do things in steps, it helps us pinpoint for what might have gone wrong if something goes wrong. So thank you.
Dex? Did you want to speak?
Yes, but I've already spoken, so I'll.
I've just seen you raise your hand, so.
Okay, I will then. So I want to first state, before I say what I'm going to say, that I think I appreciate the efforts, Mayor, that you've made throughout your orders going back into March. By all means, you know, I think we all have done our own due diligence to understand this novel virus and the science behind it and as well as trying to navigate the orders of either the governor or the judge or what have you. And I certainly agree with your measures on making cohesiveness between the opening of things and getting everything in unison. So I agree with all that. I just want to go back to the comment about the mask. So I do feel a couple of different ways about this because I think that you're right. I understand that what the governor did, it makes it very limited on some gray area to work in. But I still think that there is a psychological measure behind it and the science measure behind it. And I guess where I want to really speak to is those business owners in Kyle and then the residents of Kyle. So once again, my understanding, and it's widely written about, that masks are to protect those around you, not yourself. And so these essential workers who have been going to work this entire time without, you know, in all kinds of different areas, are continuing to do their job and continue to put themselves in harm's way. And if our citizens that are patronizing their businesses, I want them to understand that that's what the masks are for. And there's a lot of asymptomatic people out there. There's communities spread out there. And it is frightening. And as an essential employee myself that has been going to work every single day as well in Austin, which I consider an even more scarier place to be than in Kyle, as far as cases, I'm even trying to push my employer to require patrons that come into our branches to wear masks to protect me because I'm wearing my mask to protect them, and I'm wearing my mask to protect my fellow employees. And that is something that, you know, I've made that effort to do. And I think it's responsible to do that. And I think every one of us that are essential employees are doing that to protect those that we serve in our community. I just ask that businesses step up and make a decision because, yes, the way government works and the way our governor's made his order, you know, I do think there should be a line in what government tells people to do and what it tells them not to do. However, I think there's some personal responsibility to your fellow citizen. And we need to help keep each other safe. And my just concern is that, you know, just that stigma that it can put, that I'm wearing my mask and I've been busting my behind to come to work every day and be an essential employee and put myself in harm's way, and no one's doing that same thing to protect me from them. So I ask our business owners to strongly consider their employees and protecting their employees. And then I ask our residents of Kyle. We're not, obviously, we can't require anyone to wear masks. I'm not going to go down that road. But I ask you all, as fellow Kyle residents, help us keep each other safe and help us look out for each other. And, you know, there's so many different ways that you can wear a mask and get that to do that. I know it's not the easiest thing to wear and it's inconvenient and all those things, but it's not about so much you. It's about helping others. And, you know, I feel very strongly about this because I have been going to work essentially every day. I haven't seen my family because I go to work and put myself in risk every day to put people in the public that I don't know what they're doing. So I just wanted to say that, and I hope that everybody takes this seriously and understands that even though there's not a governmental requirement and fine and all these things, to just think about your fellow citizen and perhaps, you know, they may not be as healthy as you are in a position where you are, that you could be asymptomatic or have the condition that it not bother you.
This is Councilmember Villa Lobos, and I appreciate I appreciate the words that you have just shared with our community, Ellison. And I definitely appreciate the efforts of the mayor. You know, coming from the perspective of responding to a lot of these different situations, it's good to see many different municipal leaders across the county take some aggressive action in many different ways, you know. It's hard to build that cohesiveness and consensus because everybody has different thoughts. I can tell you that when you take those actions and you're building consensus and you build consistency, definitely it helps in emergency response. It helps your first responders in a lot of different ways as well. The trickle-down effect is tremendous. And you are correct, it's not so much about the individual, but where the individual comes in contact with other groups of people and how they're exposed. So it's very important that we continue to push forward with those ideas and that let's care for each other, look out for each other. Let's utilize every form of mitigation to exposure, any kind of device that we can have in place, take any kind of mitigation efforts that we possibly can, both from a public standpoint, but also from a government standpoint. You remember, one of the things in our charter and one of the things that we're ascribed to, and we take an oath, all of us, as elected leaders, is that one of the things that we have to provide is something that our citizens can't provide for themselves. And that's one of those things is public safety. And I know that it's been refreshing to work with all of you and listen to your assessments and take the lead on. assessments and take the lead on, on, on doing your best to keep all of us safe. As you make those decisions, they don't just affect me, they affect my family and they affect many people that I see on a regular basis. And I appreciate it. And from a, an emergency management professional, it's also, it also carries quite a bit for me and knowing that we, we have leadership in, in, in the region that is taking this seriously and is, and is, and is taking every effort within their authority to, to help out the bigger cause, which is, which is public safety for all of us. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Alex. Any other thoughts or comments or questions related to Mayor's orders?
Mayor, I, I don't want to just talk for the sake of talking, you know me, but I do want to thank you for the amount of time that you've taken with every one of these orders. I know that it weighs heavy on you and you really think it through. And, you know, we have a great staff that helps us, you know, come to these decisions and really figure out what we have to do. I share your frustration, Councilmember Ellison. You know, when we had the, the local control taken away from, from the city by the governor's order, you know, it became tough, but I'm also really thankful for the number of businesses that have worked with us to have their employees wear masks. To the point of being so proud that, you know, Speaker of the House Bonin just yesterday went on a rant on social media, talking about his frustration with the home improvement stores and no one wearing masks at point of sale, people who were interacting with the customers. And, you know, he was right there next to the governor when they made it very clear that we could not regulate the wearing of masks by our citizens. And he's talking about his hometown home improvement stores where the employees aren't wearing masks. But yet I can walk into virtually any Kyle business. And when I came face to face with an employee, they're all wearing masks. And that's because of the work from this order. So while I would love to see everybody extend that courtesy to those essential workers in town, and I agree with you 100%, I am extremely grateful that the businesses here in Kyle respond so well to, to the needs of the citizens and to the requests of the local government. And, you know, that we try to do our part because it's a, it's a, it's a interesting line is to, to balance on what we ask and going too far. And it's been a stress point for many of us because we're dealing with liberties and different things like that. But I, I, I see a great business community in Kyle. When I can go into every business and when I interact with employees, they are wearing masks. And I've seen that this entire week since that order was given. And I think that they've done a really good job and it's now incumbent, like you said, Councilmember Ellison, for the rest of us to be courteous to them and wear our masks as well. So thank you, Mayor, for all the time and effort that you put into that. And I am going to wholeheartedly support this order.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to approve the order as written.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Coach, seconded by Councilmember Vialobos. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for all the hard work you have done. And then also, Councilmember Ellison, I still go to work every day. I still see patients three times a week and it's, it just amazes me how patients will come into the office without wearing a mask. And of course I wear my mask, I keep my social distancing, I have my protocols. And it's somewhat unnerving sometimes. So I, I do appreciate everything you said and wholeheartedly agree. And then again, make that plea to everybody in our community to pretty much just respect each and everybody in our community and, you know, understand that you are protecting everybody else when you wear the mask. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. That's it for the regular session. We still, still have two items to take, tackle on. An execution, I believe that's project, just peachy and, yes, sir.
Before we adjourn, I'd just like to, I know we're not doing any proclamations right now, but I'd like to remind everybody that today is day two of National Air Quality Awareness Week and it is also World Asthma Day. So the theme for today is air pollution and asthma. In central Texas, about one, one out of every 16 kids has asthma. And there are approximately 13.7 annual asthma related hospitalizations for 10,000 kids. So we've seen throughout the last six weeks, as people are not commuting as much, that cities that had poor air quality are now able to see the stars. So just keeping everybody aware that, uh, let's do our part to keep our air and our ozone safe. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Shield, go ahead.
Okay, pursuant to chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council observes the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exceptions contained in chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project just peachy, project scarlet.
Second.
All in favor?
Out of order. Sorry. Your motion is out of order. I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. There is no action taken in executive session. There will be no action taken now. Councilwoman Vialobos.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Vialobos, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Alexander Hamilton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night.